Vince, we good? Okay. Okay. Good evening. I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting of January 27th, 2020 to order. Before we get started, I would like to introduce Ty Pham, who is our new Commissioner. She's representing Ward Four, Phil Becerra. So now, at this point in time, we have a full Commissioner for the Planning Commission as of this year. So, welcome. And with that, can we all stand and take your pleads, allegiance? Can you get the lead, Ty?
Thank you. Ready? Begin.
My pleads are allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republicans that have transgressed one nation and the ground and individual, the liberty of the people.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please take roll call.
Commissioner Garcia.
Present.
Commissioner Rivera. Commissioner Phan.
Present.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Present.
Commissioner Conno. Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
For the record, Commissioner Rivera will not be in attendance tonight. Chair, you have quorum.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to just take a moment to review the process for the public hearing so that everybody knows what to expect. Staff will provide an oral report and answer questions from the Commission. The public hearing will then be opened. The applicant will have time to make a presentation, up to fifteen minutes. Members of the public that would like to also speak have three minutes to speak. They need to fill out a card with the Secretary. The public hearing will then be closed, and discussion will be returned to the Commission for formal action to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when you're organizing your thoughts for speaking. We'd like you to state your name and address, state whether or not you support or oppose or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement will, your statement should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Avoid gossip, emotion, and repetition. A clear, concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. Now's the time to have public comments on any non-agenda item. Does anybody have any public comments on non-agenda items at this moment? Hearing none. We'll close the public comments and we'll move to consent calendar. First of all, I'd like to have a motion on the minutes from the December 8th, 2019 meeting.
As I move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. You can abstain on that, Ty. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. It's a six, it's a five, one absence, abstention. Okay. Next item is recognizing the absence of Felix. Do we have a motion for that?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero. We'll now move to the business calendar. The formal action of the Planning Commission shall become effective after the ten-day appeal period. Unless the City Council holds a public hearing on the, on the matter, then the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and the decision by the City Council. An appeal from the, from the decision or requirement of the Planning Commission must be filed with the Clerk of the Council and a copy sent to the public, to the Planning Department within ten days of the date of the Commission's actions. The appeal may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. At this point in time, I'd like to make one change in the, in the agenda, and that is move item five up to the first item. And I believe it's, the Planning Department has recommended that we have a two-week continuance on this item. So, item five will be continued for two weeks.
Correct.
Motion to approve, motion to approve the continuance.
As I move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. One absence. Okay. This is the time and place for item number one, application amendment of number 2019-03 and conditional use permit number 2019-21 with the project located at 813 North Euclid Street. It is a recommendation on this matter that will be forwarded to the Council no la, at a later date. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please do so during the public hearing. We will begin with any of the commissioners have anything to identify at this point in time or disclose. Okay? Ivan, yours. Go to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm members of the Commission. As you've stated, this project is for several applications, one being a mitigated negative declaration number twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight, amendment application twenty nineteen dash oh-three, and conditional use permit number twenty nineteen dash twenty-one for the property located at 813 North Euclid. And the application specifically is for a 7-Eleven service station and convenience store. This was a rendering that was submitted by the applicant for the proposed project. As you can see, the street on the right will be Euclid, and the street on the left, which runs east-west, is Hazard. And the proposal is to develop a 3,045-square-foot convenience store and an 1,800-square-foot fueling canopy with four fueling stations, eight, eight pumps, side by side. Twenty-four-hour operation is proposed. That's the CEP is before you this evening. And the development will occur on a .65-acre parcel, which is currently vacant and has been so for several decades. As you can see here, the application for amendment will change the current zoning, which is an R2, and I'll circle that. On the top image, that is the current zoning for the property, and it will change it to a C1, which would make it consistent with the general plan designation that the property currently has of general commercial. This is an aerial view. As you can see, the property is vacant, and it's on the city boundary to Garden Grove. The addresses changed there. This is a most recent photo of the property looking southeast on Euclid. As you can see, there's a couple of people hanging out in the back, and that's been a constant issue. And this is the proposed site plan. So, you're looking north. Euclid runs south-north on the left side, and Hazard, as I mentioned, east to west. The convenience store will be located to the east of the property, and then the fueling canopy with two driveways, one on Euclid and one on Hazard. This is a proposed floor plan of the 7-Eleven convenience store, pretty standard, if you've been in one recently. And this is the proposed elevations for this current property. Again, the project, by changing the zoning and constructing the convenience store and service station, will provide an added service to the workers' residents in the area. Changing the zoning, as I stated, will make it consistent with the general plan designation that the city currently has for the property. The site has been designed to minimize potential impacts, depending on the services that are provided to the surrounding neighborhood. And conditions have been added for the conditional use permit application that is being submitted and before you this evening to make sure that no nuisances are created based on the twenty-four-hour operation. And lastly, it is consistent with our goal one and goal two of our general plan land use element, and it promotes a balance of different types of land uses in different parts of the city, and also enhances the city economic and fiscal viability by constructing a project on a vacant land parcel. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council approve the mitigated negative declaration number twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight, amendment application number twenty nineteen dash what, uh, three, I'm sorry, that was a mistake on my end, and conditional use permit dash twenty nineteen, twenty-one. Those numbers were accidentally deleted there. I apologize for that, but it is correct on our staff report. I am here to answer any questions you may have based on the project and the submittal. We do have our Sequo consultant and our applicant, Adon Madrid, who is here on behalf of 7-Eleven to answer any specific questions.
Thank you, Ivan. Does any of the Commissioners have a question of Ivan at this time? Go ahead, Cynthia.
In regards to the photo, the site photo looking southeast on Euclid Street?
Yes.
The property that's on the other side of that wall, the height of that wall, is that going to go up?
So, they'll be constructing a perimeter CMU wall. The commercial properties require at least an eight-foot fence, but I have to take a look at the, the plans. They are going to be enhanced to make sure that there's proper screening from the residential to the south, and also the, the church or temple to the east of the property.
Do you know the height of that wall currently?
Not off the top of my head, but the applicant is here. He's been to the site several times.
Because I'd like to, at least if it's tall enough so that the house can't be seen from the lot, because that's kind of...
It will be increased to the point, I don't know if the site plan shows a little bit better, but usually the, and I'll use the mouse just to kind of highlight, usually the perimeter walls along here, up to where the front yard setback, are at a higher height to be able to screen any sensitive land uses to the opposite side of the parcel. And then, because we have front yard setback height requirements, then because Euclid and Hazard are arterial streets, the max they can build is four feet on that end. So, it's usually where the driveways are.
And then, with a new project like that, right, you know, next to homes and stuff, in the past with projects that have happened like this, have you received any complaints later on about lighting? Because I know that now there's going to be this nice bright light, and some of those windows face it from the homes. I just want to know if you've had complaints and how those issues have been handled?
Not that I am aware of any previous projects, but we did have one last year where we worked with the Police Department on security lighting, and through plan check, we were able to solve any of those potential impacts on the neighborhood and the homes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Anne.
Hi there. So, I have a few questions. First of all, thank you for answering the lighting question. That was a big deal. So, one of the first things I was looking at is the alley, which seems to be on the back end of the building, so I believe it's between the temple and the store, right? What is the spacing for that? You said four feet?
Five feet.
Five feet, okay. Is there a gate preventing people from getting back there? Because as you can see where the generator is, I know there's some cypress trees, right? And it's a, a great place for people to hang out. As you mentioned, there are people in the back. What are we doing to prevent that?
Okay. So, that's actually a really good question, and there was a condition of approval that was added to the conditioning use permit. As you can see, I believe it's number fi, uh, four or five. Essentially, what's going to happen, there is a gate to the north portion of the building, and we have conditioned the application to provide a wrought iron decorative fence along the generator side. Well, this is a bike parking kind of lock, locking key, and then this is the, the fueling equipment kind of ventilation. So, what we've added is, in the condition is that the project will have a wrought iron fence to prevent any, any people from going back there, and also dense landscaping in case there is an interest in trying to camp out back there. So, there will be security fencing.
Okay. And my other question, same area, because we, I see that there's basically blank walls, which I know we have a lot of issues with graffiti in the city, and, you know, you're kind of creating an attractive nuisance there. I know that they have to paint over the graffiti within twenty-four hours. Is there, I guess with the dense vegetation, are we looking at ivy or something that can, you know, maybe climb the wall and help prevent that in the first place?
There are options. We have done several things in the past. One of them, obviously the easiest is to apply paint that is deterrent to graffiti, won't stick, but we can always, oh, vines. That, that was my other option. We have several in the past. I was going over one of them at the moment, but vines as well.
Okay, yeah, so vines, ivy, something that, you know, you're not going to be painting on once it starts covering the wall.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Angie?
I have three questions. So, on page thirty-two, under condition number eight, we don't have a, a security plan yet. Has there been any discussion? I know for, when we talked about the last 7-Eleven, we had a crime report by a police officer, and based on the crime report, this person provided a plan as for security. I tried to look for the, what do you call it, the crime report, but I couldn't find it. Is it here, or are we going to get one? Are we going to get anything?
Good question. So, for applications that are brought before you, we consult with the Police Department. There wasn't any, in the report that he pulled up, there wasn't any incidents related to the property or anything close to the property, and that is why we didn't have conditions like the other application. And I believe the last one that was here before you was, in context of things, a separate, you know, another area of the city that was...
High crime, yeah.
Yes.
So, that's one question. And then, has this applicant tried to process an application through Garden Grove? Do you know anything about that? Does its border? So, I'm just trying to see if they...
I'm not aware of that, but the applicant is here, and he may be able to answer those questions.
I'll take that. And then, the last Sunshine meeting they had was two years ago. Have they tried meeting with the community again?
So, this project in context took a little bit longer because of the environmental, there were some last-minute changes and that sort of thing, but through the Sunshine ordinance meeting that we are required to have, it's, it's a helpful tool to identify whether the project is in very sensitive areas or maybe concerns that the residents have. We didn't have a follow-up meeting because it wasn't required, but we do have it at the initial phase, which is the development review process. So, we have to have it between the first twenty days of the submittal in order to identify any issues that the neighborhood may have on the property early on. And so, as you can see, there was only one person in attendance, and I think the general consensus was, anything being developed is better than the vacant land and having issues with transients. But we didn't have a follow-up meeting because it wasn't required.
Thank you. I just wanted to note the input of the community. Thank you.
Ivan?
Yeah.
Were there any public comments that we received during the public notice period?
There was a just general question about the project itself, neighbor to the west on Euclid, just kind of general questions, hours of operation, things of that sort. It wasn't to take a stand on pro or against, and I... Okay. That, I'm not aware, but...
There was one comment submitted today. I forwarded that over to you in opposition.
Ivan, just out of curiosity, what was there before? Because you said it's been open, it's been empty a lot for a long time?
So, ways, ways back, probably as old as I am, there was a service station there a long time ago.
That's why the Sequo was probably held up.
It was one of the things that we looked at, but not something that, you know, raised a red flag.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of Ivan at this time? Ivan, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary, it appears we did receive one item?
That's correct, and it has been distributed.
Okay.
Can I make a comment on that?
Pardon?
I just want to say, I believe there are comments about the fence and the dense shrubbery address the concerns regarding loitering and homelessness camping out in the area.
Good. Okay. At this point in time, we'd like to open up the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak at this point? Please identify yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission and staff. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak. My name is Adon Madrid. I am with a company called ASI Development. Our offices are located at 5932 Bolsa Avenue, Suite 107, in the city of Huntington Beach. I am here this evening on behalf of the applicant, 7-Eleven. As indicated in the staff report, 7-Eleven is requesting approval of a change of zone and approval of a conditional use permit to construct and operate a twenty-four-hour convenience store that will be dry. There is no alcohol associated with this store in conjunction with a gas station. As I've been indicated earlier, and as also indicated in the staff report, the property has been vacant since 1987. When the previous gas station was demolished, it was back in, in 1987, their structures were removed and et cetera. I'd like to add that the, the property has been vacant for quite some time. And during that, that time as a gas station, it, it served the community for twenty-five years, and it's been vacant now for the last thirty-three years. We've been working with staff for, for quite some time on this project, although the Planning Commission might be seeing this for the first time. We initially submitted our application in 2018, and we've been through several meetings with staff, several different studies, and collaborating with staff to get to this juncture. We have a set of plans that fully comply with the city's municipal code and, and addresses all the issues that staff had along the way. That being said, it's, you know, it's been a pleasure working with staff. You have some of the most knowledgeable and capable staff that we've had an opportunity to work with, and we really appreciate the help that they gave us along the way. So, here we are, a couple of years later in this endeavor. 7-Eleven has spent quite a considerable amount of, of resources and capital to get to this juncture, and the property owner's been sitting on this property for, for quite some time. So, needless to say, we're, we're very happy to be here. We appreciate that we have come to this juncture in the process, and hope that the Planning Commission sees it fit to approve the application. To answer some of the questions that were raised just a minute ago, the block wall that's on that south side, it's, it's existing six feet tall. If the code would allow, we would be happy to, to raise that up another, you know, course of block, maybe make it seven feet or eight feet, if the code allows it, we'd be happy to do that. It's no problem. With regards to, to the lighting and the possible, the possibility of the lighting spilling over onto the adjacent property, the light standards that are being proposed are state-of-the-art LED light standards with really good fixtures on them, and that allows us to direct the, the appropriate levels of candle, of candle foot power onto the property without, without it bleeding over onto the adjacent property. So, we're able to achieve that on the property and then have, you know, little to no illumination on the adjoining properties. So, we feel confident that we can, we can address that concern. With regards to the, to the southeast corner of the property and securing that, that's fine, you know, we're happy to put up a fence and augment that with, with landscaping to keep, keep, keep people from accessing that part of the property. Regarding Garden Grove, we, we do happen to have an application in the city of Garden Grove that was just submitted. I don't believe it's, it's anywhere near this particular location. It's off of Chapman and Dale Street. We don't have anything proposed anywhere near this, this store that's being proposed this evening. So, with that, thank you again for your time, and I'm here to answer any questions that the Commission might have that haven't already been discussed.
Cynthia?
I'll, I want to see if my colleagues also would agree, but I want to ask you, since you're here, would you be open to the first year, perhaps meet with planning, check in every six months, twice that first year, to see how it's working out in regards to the homelessness and see if it's affecting the property or not? And if it starts to, so that quickly we can come up with a solution so that it doesn't become a problem and a nuisance for the neighborhood? Because it's all neighborhood. It's not a little bit, it's all neighborhood. So, the quicker we can respond to it and create a plan for it, I think benefits everyone. Would you guys be open to that?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, it, you know, we, we definitely want to run a successful store, just as much as the city wants us to run a successful store. We want to be good neighbors, and 7-Eleven takes great care in selecting franchisees that have demonstrated the ability to operate successful stores, especially in areas where there might be, you know, the potential for, for loitering and for homelessness. Not that it exists here. We don't believe that we have an acute homeless problem here, thank goodness. But nevertheless, you know, we will make that concerted effort to pick the right franchisee, and we'd be more than happy to follow up with staff and partner with them to, to address any issues that do come up.
Thank you. That, Ty?
I think this question might be for city attorney. So, I'm looking at page six, one dash six, and it states that we hired a consultant to prepare the draft M and D, and it was circulated for twenty days between January sixth, twenty twenty and January twenty-six, twenty twenty. When did we take that down? Was it yesterday or today? Do you know?
Our office does not actually handle the posting of those, so I'd have to defer to the planning staff.
I'm sorry. The posting actually stays on-site, but that's the legal period that we have to initiate the posting. I don't believe we take it down until the hearing process is completed.
Okay, so we had it up until today?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? Angie?
So, in regards to your application in Garden Grove, do you submit also a request for a twenty-four-hours convenience stores? Or what were the hours that you requested for that city?
It, it's twenty-four hours. All of the 7-Eleven stores, I mean, our customers are their customers. When they see a 7-Eleven sign, they, they expect to, to have that store open twenty-four hours and available to them. So, all, all of the stores that, all the existing stores and stores that are being proposed are twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Yeah, this, I didn't intend to interrupt you there, but this particular store is an existing store, and we're optimizing the, the location by redeveloping it and adding a fueling service station to it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks.
Madam Secretary, I do not have any cards on this item number one. Does anyone like to speak in this item at this point in time? Okay. Please come up here and fill out a card. If the first person could possibly come forward, we'll start the public hearing, and then if they fill out the card afterwards, that'd be fine, too. So, if you want to come forward right now, identify yourself. Come on up. You got three minutes? Go ahead.
Thank you very much, esteemed members of the Planning Commission. My name is Josh Colcha. I'm the managing member of the entity of the ownership, Euclid Hazard Capital LLC. As my colleague, Adon, just presented, number one, we want to thank the city so much for the opportunity to be able to present a development over here. We're extremely honored for the potential of what we, what we can present for the city over here. Through the process that we've been dealing with, the Planning Department, I know that we've gone back and forth on our renderings and our design, and that we were, you know, working very extensively to try to present a project that not only the city would be proud of, but we would be proud to be delivering to the city, working very closely with the residences in the area. I've been confronted with some of the neighbors who are always bugging me and pushing me when we're going to start development. We've been sharing with them the ideas of what we have, not to say that I've spoken with every single neighbor, but with the ones that I have spoken with. They're very excited and they can't wait for, for the site to be built. You know, we feel that what we're doing is we're bringing the zoning and the development current with, consistent with, with, with the rest of the area, and that we can add kind of like a spark, and that this could be another stepping stone to enhancing and elevating and bringing jobs and commerce to the city, not only as a beautiful aesthetic that's, you know, appeasing and beautiful through the outsiders when you're passing by the neighborhood, but also something that will be a financial viable asset to the city that can further enhance its capacity. With having a 20,000-square-foot lot and somewhat being limited on that, we feel that we're extremely maximizing our opportunities or in our capacities to really develop, to really deliver something to the city that, once again, we can be proud of, and that will be something that the city can look at us and say that they, that they would appreciate it as well. I want to reiterate that it has been a pleasure working with the city of Santa Ana. We very much look forward to further developments that we can do with the city and seeing that we can have a real partnership longstanding going forward. Thank you guys very much for, for today.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
And you want me to fill out a card?
Please do. Okay. Martin Mares.
Good evening, Commissioners. I live at 800 North Euclid Street, so I'm basically across. I could see the property from there, and I'm just standing, I'm neutral on it. I guess just my comment was really on, I looked at some of the plans, but I didn't have full time to really read everything, but I think more of my, the concern I have on it is more of the street itself, it's on Euclid and Hazard. There's constant accidents there, so I just don't know how, the more traffic volume that's coming in there with the, what do you call them? Where you, where you have to yield for the vehicles? I don't know if that's going to change there, and there's, there's a couple of schools around there, so there's kids constantly going through there. So, I just want to make sure those are some of the concern, at least my concerns, and just see if there's some clarification, or even if there's a left lane turning and coming into Hazard, how that's going to affect there as well? Just because it's pretty short and there's constant accidents there throughout the year. It's not something that, I know there's going to be an accident there in the next couple of days, so I just want to make sure that's not something, a concern that comes up with more traffic volume going through there. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you for your input. Omar Dominguez?
Good evening. My name is Omar.
My name is Omar. I actually live right across the street, at 903 North Euclid. I actually support the project. I'm tired of the homelessness activity that's going on there, as it is now. I've lived there ever since they had the old liquor store across the street. Could tell you that it was convenient for everyone in the neighborhood, because you don't need to drive anywhere, you can literally just walk from anywhere and access it. Kids walk into home from school, which I used to do, walking from Irvine all the way home. Great spot to stop by, instead of running off somewhere else. And the lighting wouldn't be such a bad thing. The street's already really bad, the city doesn't want to fix the lights, and when they do, it works for a month, and then they go back out. If you actually walk up and down Hazard Street, you'll see a bunch of cars' windows that are shattered along the street. Bringing this in should reduce that issue, because that's going to bring more traffic into the area, extra lighting, and I'm assuming people are going to call the cops, because there's always random people stopping at Seven-Elevens. But if they're promising to meet with you guys about security, maybe that's not going to be such an issue. But again, I live right across the street, I support the project. You know, who else is going to be more affected than me, right? So, thank you.
Thank you, Omar. Okay, we have no further public comments. With that, we'll close the public comments, and we'll bring it back to the commission. Does anybody like to make a motion or have a discussion on this at this time?
Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. I am very familiar with the area. The lot been empty for a long time, and the consecrated train scene in the area. The added convenience store and the gas station for the area would be excellent major development improvement for the area. I am totally support that project. Would like to motion to recommend the city council to approve and adopt, mitigate negative declaration number 2018-28, amendment application number 2019-01, and condition use permit number 2019-2S conditioned.
Do we have a second on that?
Do you need to add?
Well, clarity, there was, there were discussions regarding lighting, screening of walls with vines, fencing, potentially raising the block wall height along the south side, and then also a six-month staff review. Some of the conditions may already be in the staff report, but I would recommend that your motion include, is inclusive of those discussion, and staff can work with the applicant to finalize the condition.
Let me, can I also just make one comment here? And that is, is that Ken, I think, was reading off of what we had as presentation, and really what we need to do is we need to have a conditional use permit for 21921, and then a strategic plan for number three and two, and I believe there's one other item that was not correct, the number was not correct. Ivan, what's the correct number?
The amendment application is 21828. The conditional use permit is 21903. I'm sorry, environmental review 201828. Amendment application 201903, and conditional use permit 21921.
Okay, so, Madam Secretary, you have that correct, right? Okay, now, at this point in time, is there any amendment? Norma?
I would just request that we address one of the public comments, concerns about the stop sign and traffic issue there.
I agree.
I think that was not addressed in any of the documents that we've reviewed, or at least not that I was able to spot. And secondly, I would strongly suggest, and hopefully you guys can confirm this, that overusing, using just paint to avoid graffiti, that we go with actual landscaping lines as was suggested before, I think, especially since it's a fully residential area.
Agree. I think also, to your point about the traffic and the signs and everything else, I think there was also the comment that Omar made about the streetlights being off and on, and I'd like to make sure that that's gotten, we get back to Public Works on that, to make sure that that's covered.
We'll have, we'll make contact with Public Works to discuss within the two issues outside of this conditional use permit.
Okay. So, any other, Ty?
So just for clarification, regarding the coming in and out of the lot, so if you're going north on Euclid, you can make a right into the lot, and then if you're exiting onto Hazard, you can make a right onto Hazard, and you can make a left onto Hazard? Is that currently what it is? Because that seems to be the concern regarding the, you know, traffic and accidents happening, students crossing the street.
If I remember correctly, I believe Public Works obviously reviewed the application and the traffic analysis that was done through the environmental review. And if you enter, let's say, through Euclid, right in, right out, that's pretty much it. But as far as Hazard, you are able to just make a right on, and no left. That is a concern, right?
Yes, so I don't want someone making a left, you know, delaying cars, you know, blocking traffic, et cetera, but that you answered my question.
Right. I think if I remember correctly, that there was a sign to be posted, right only on that, but I'd have to take a look at the plans.
Does the applicant know, or would he?
If there isn't one, we'd always add the condition. It's...
Because I believe all of the commissioners seem to be concerned regarding that issue with students walking and whatnot, and if you're making a left into an area that's already jam-packed, you can cause more accidents than there already are.
I think it's just one lane going east on Hazard, if that's correct? Only one vehicle going east, one west?
No improvements for speed on my plane, no added physical barriers.
So what Adon is mentioning is there is some plan for improvements on Hazard to provide a bike lane eventually, and that's going to create the additional barrier between the vehicle and the sidewalk. But Public Works would be the one to provide that specific information on when it's being implemented and constructed. But as far as I do remember, I believe it's just a right out.
So a right in, right out? Okay.
Yeah. There weren't any major issues on traffic, so I believe that's the one.
Cynthia has a question?
Yeah.
I have a question. So if I'm a customer and I go there, then if I'm coming off Euclid going north, I make a right into it, and if I exit Hazard, I'm going to go right?
Yes.
So then I can never make a left to go back the way I was coming from?
So you'd have to exit Euclid?
But Euclid's worse than Hazard.
Right.
So why would we even allow a left out of there?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't allow a left.
So then, from Hazard, I mean, from Euclid, you have to wait for all the traffic, because it is a pretty busy street, to try to get across to make a U-turn at the light?
Or...
I don't see how that is safer than making a left onto Hazard, when that street is not as busy.
I think in contact, I'm not a traffic engineer, by trade, I can't really tell you...
I've been there, and to put up political signs and stuff, and so I knew that, it just doesn't make sense that I'm not going to be able to get back onto Euclid and go left. So how do I, and the traffic on Euclid is much busier than Hazard, so I don't...
So when the report is submitted, there is a review, a certain period, and Christine is here to answer any questions, technical questions with it. She assisted the project in the environmental review. But when a traffic report is submitted, they analyze the intersection through traffic periods, peaks, and so sometimes you can't avoid human nature, people making a left, but the conditions that were added through the development review process of no left is to try to mitigate those issues. But if someone's going to make a left onto Hazard, there's nothing we can do to avoid it. The only thing we can do is apply certain restrictions to try to mitigate those situations, and by being right in, right out only, it at least kind of helps the cause. So I'm just providing that information for you to...
No, I'm just trying to understand it.
Right.
I'm trying to understand, because it's not making sense to me.
So the site, so as you can see, the driveway on the south side has been moved all the way back as far as they can to the southern portion of the site, and likewise along the east. In terms of left, limiting it to right in and right out, that is a limitation of the site. Generally, when you have a site this close to the intersection, at such a busy intersection, limiting the left out is much more beneficial for traffic than it is to allow it to go left out. For people who wants to come back to Euclid, as you're talking about, if they're going southbound, they're not going to be able to go, you know, make a left on Euclid, they would have to make a left onto Hazard and then come into the site. And if they want to come back on the southbound, they would have to make the adjustment by making the right on Hazard and coming back around, or making a U-turn at the intersection. So this section will not allow for left in or left out of the site.
I guess I just, I compare it to the other Seven-Eleven that we approved, and it's very similar. First Street is extremely busy, and was it Daisy? First and Daisy? And we didn't put any limitations there. And it's probably busier than this intersection, so that's why we just tried...
I think that's, it was right in on First Street, and then right out on Daisy. It wasn't a left out on Daisy.
I don't remember having the limitations on that.
Left out on Daisy?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes, left out on Daisy, because the right would have went into residential.
It was a left out on Daisy.
Same thing here, right, we'll go into residential.
Except Daisy, Daisy is not a major corridor, it's much more of a local street.
Going back into the city.
Yeah, because if you make a right on Daisy, you would have went deeper into residential, and then left would allow you to get on the first. But you weren't able to make a left in on first, or left out.
Let me, let me just say, if we feel compelled that we'd like to know a little bit more how this is going to operate from the standpoint of traffic, I think at this point, since we have a number of items that we brought up in front of Public Works, for Public Works, I might suggest that we continue this item for two weeks, and then bring it back to the commission with the information. I think there's, there's three things that I heard. One is a cert, a safety and security plan of sorts. The second is a traffic plan, and the third is, I think the, you know, the wall, the height of the walls, and also how the walls are going to be covered up in such a way that we don't have to continually fight graffiti and everything else.
Community input.
Pardon?
Community input, number one.
Well, I, I think at this point in time, the community input, I mean, that's what came forward. I think we had community input tonight from individuals, too, supporting it, but to have, I don't, I mean, I'm willing to go ahead and say we have community input, too, but I think at this point in time, I'm not sure we'd be able to organize that in two weeks, if that's the case. That would be my concern.
So the applicant has met their requirement in terms of public outreach, both with the Sunshine Meeting. The purpose of the public hearing notice, we completed via mail, we completed via posting on-site, as well as publication in the newspapers. So the goal of that is to ensure that anyone who may have forgotten since the Sunshine Meeting is reminded again, because the radius goes out to the same 500-foot radius. So any comments we would receive either in writing or anyone here tonight, so they have come met with their public outreach requirements.
So, if that's okay with the rest of my commissioners, if we'd like to, at this point in time, make a motion to continue this item at this point, I'd like to do so. Ty?
I'll move to continue the item two weeks, so that we can address those four issues that you mentioned.
And do we have a date on that exactly?
February 10th.
February 10th, okay.
Second.
Second? All right? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So it's 601, absent. Thank you very much. This is the time for item number two, conditional use permit for number 2019-38, for the project located at 542 East Central Avenue. Decision on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days by the interested individual or group. If you wish to address the planning commission, please fill out a card at this point in time. We will begin, is any of the commissioners have anything to disclose at this point in time? Okay. Jerry? Yours?
Good evening, chairman and members of the planning commissioners. As mentioned, this is an application for conditional use permit filed on behalf of Carhu, who's representing the diocese of Orange. The request is for a conditional use permit to construct a two-story, 6,372-square-foot rectory building with an attached garage. This is an image of the subject's site, which has been vacant since 2004, and prior to that was the Dalhuy Community Center. The site is located at the southwest corner of Holiday Street and Central Avenue. Across from the street, you have the Our Lady of Guadalupe Dalhuy Church, which is the primary headquarters for that particular church. And then it's primarily surrounded by residential uses to the southwest and east, and you do have some commercial uses at the northeast corner of the surrounding vicinity. This is the proposed site plan, and just excuse the north arrow, it's actually facing the wrong way, it should be facing towards the right. But you do have Central Avenue to the right, and then Holiday Street to the bottom of that. The proposed structure is set back 20 feet from Central Avenue and 10 feet from Holiday Street, and then it does also have eight surface parking spaces with a two-car garage. A trash enclosure is also being proposed, and it's surrounded by landscaping. This is the floor plan of the first floor, which primarily consists of just the offices and some conference rooms that are going to be utilized by the rectors, as well as members of the Dalhuy Church. And as previously mentioned, to the rear, you do have that attached two-car garage. And this is a floor plan of the second floor, which is primarily the headquarters for where the rectories will be sleeping and dining and eating and whatnot. In addition to that, you do have some outdoor balcony areas, one of them, which is right up against the two-car garage, and then another one that's off of the Holiday Street. And these are the proposed elevations. You have the north elevation, which is the primary elevation that will be facing Central Avenue, and then the south elevation is the rear elevation that is facing into the surface lot. With regards to the architecture, it's a very traditional Spanish Revival minimalist architecture. The building will feature stucco finishes, as well as tile roof and ornamental wrought iron work. And this is the proposed east and west elevations. The east elevation is the elevation that will be facing Central Street, or Holiday Avenue, I'm sorry. And then the west elevation, that's the one that faces up against the duplex, that's to the west of the subject property. With that, the conditional use permit is consistent and does comply with San Antonio Municipal Standards. The director will provide a service to Santa Ana residents and will allow the church to expand and address its growing congregation. And the project, as assigned, would not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding community, and would not adversely affect the general plan. And with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve conditional use permit number 2019-38S conditioned. And then with regards to the conditions of approval, I know we sent out a last email updating the conditions of approval, we accidentally inserted the wrong conditions of approval. And just to clarify, the new conditions of approval are three, four, and five. And the applicant wanted me to clarify condition number five with regards to the landscape requirement. One of the landscape requirements is that the applicant submit a landscape plan in accordance to the Willow ordinance. In addition to that, staff is recommending and asking that mature cypress trees be planted along the west elevation to preserve the privacy of the adjacent duplex, and to also be self-mitigating over the years. And those trees are being requested to be planted at six feet, every six feet, or every, one tree for every six linear feet, and at be a minimum size of three gallons. With that, I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Does the commission have any questions, or Jerry? Angie?
So question on the sleeping quarters, is that a separate permit, or do they already have a permit to create sleeping quarters with the church?
This is part of the request. The request is a rectory office building, so the first floor is primarily, as mentioned, office space, and then the second floor will be the living quarters for the priest or...
Can you remind me again how many they wanted? I think it was a couple.
In terms of the floor plan, there are two studios being proposed, so maybe two or three occupants.
And then is this the lot right in front of the church of, there's a church?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so that's the lot, okay.
Yes, so this is the subject site of where the church is located at, and the subject site highlighted in red.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Good question. Out of curiosity, I guess I have all these questions... Out of curiosity, I guess I have all these questions today. Why is it when the plants are coming to us, we're not also seeing already the landscaping plan? It's coming after the fact, after we approve it, and I just feel like...
There is an exhibit seven, I believe, on the staff report that includes a conceptual landscape plan.
But I'm talking about the conditions. The conditions, number five, I believe, states that they will submit prior to approval...
Correct.
...a plan, so that to me, I mean, there's a drawing, but I don't know that that's going to be the final proposed plan.
It, it's, it's conceptual. So at this stage in the process, normally, most of the landscape plans do not actually get plan check until it gets approved. So they have to still submit plans to, to staff and we need to analyze those landscape plans to make sure they're in accordance to the water efficient landscape ordinance. In addition to that, we add that those conditions of approval to assure the privacy of the adjacent duplex.
Okay.
Any other questions, Jerry? Thank you, Jerry. We'll now open up the public hearing. Oh, Madam Secretary, have we received any written notification on this item?
We have not.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak at this time? Would you identify yourself? Thank you.
Honorable Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. My name is Carl Hoy, the applicant from Travis Companies. I have submitted a speaker card with my address, phone number, and email. Good evening again. We have been very fortunate to have the opportunity and the pleasure to work with your planning staff over the last several weeks for this project, and we are extremely appreciative of them having this project brought before you for consideration tonight. Over the past several weeks, we've worked with the planning staff to come with, come together with the project that's being presented to you tonight. We have received a copy of the staff report along with all of the conditions of approval, and we are in complete concurrence with those findings of the staff report and the conditions of approval, including the clarification that was just read into public testimony on item number five relative to the spacing of the, spacing and the size of the mature, or excuse me, the cypress trees to be placed along this project's west property line. We understand the reasoning and the goal for that, and that is to provide a privacy for the resident to the, to the west. With that said, again, we are in complete concurrence with all of the conditions of approval and the findings in the staff report and respectfully request your approval of the project this evening. I am available to answer any questions. We do have a representative from the Diocese of Orange here in case I cannot answer your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Since you submitted a card also, I'm going to assume that this has been taken care of, so...
Yes, sir.
All right. Does anybody have a question or anything for the applicant?
No?
Okay, thank you, Carl. Would anybody else like to speak on this item at this time? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed and we'll bring it back to the commission. Would anybody like to, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-eight.
Second.
Second from Ken. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll take a quick vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero, one absence. This is the time and place to consider item number three, conditional use permit number two, zero, one, nine, dash, four, four, for the project located at twenty-nine, twenty, South Kilson Avenue. And Min, would you like to do an introduction to our new planner?
Thank you, Chairman. The report is going to be given by Kathy Kang. I'd like to welcome Kathy. She's one of the newest member of the planning divisions. She is two months old with us, came to us from the city of Hermosa Beach. She's been a planner for five years and her title is Assistant Planner, so I'd like to say welcome and introduce her to the commission.
Thank you for the introduction.
Okay, just before we get into that, decision on this matter is final unless appealed in ten days by any interested individual or group. If you wish to address the planning commission, please fill out a form. Before we begin, has any commissioner had anything to disclose at this point in time on this item? Kathy, it's yours.
Okay, thank you Chair McCoughlin. And good evening, Chair and as planning commission, members of the planning commission. So K9 Rehabilitation of Orange County, CUP number two, twenty, nineteen, dash, forty-four, located at twenty-nine, twenty, South Kilson Drive. So the applicant is proposing to operate a K9 rehabilitation facility, and there is no proposed site modifications. The, the use actually requires a conditional use permit. This is zone M1, zone M1, which requires a conditional use permit in order to operate. As mentioned, it's zone M1 and it's located south of Dyer Road and at the west of South Kilson Drive. On the property, there is four standalone buildings and the subject building is located at the south, east corner of, of the property. And surrounding uses are industrial warehousing and manufacturer uses, also zone M1. Here is the furniture of the subject building. And here is a floor plan. In this floor plan, there's, they are showing, you know, the different activities that are part of their rehabilitation treatment, as well examine room, office, the waiting area, and as well where they do administrative work. So towards the, like, more of the back portion of the building, it's like an open concept floor plan, so there's the various activities that the dogs are going through when they're receiving treatment. So the proposed K9 rehabilitation facility provides a unique service to the community and it satisfies a niche demand, so the project is also at its service. So, you know, it basically diversifies the city's service that is provided, and it will not be detrimental to the person or the general public in the city. And the operation of the business will be conducted fully in an enclosed building, and there are conditions that will minimize any impacts that the facility will, under And so staff recommends approval of the CUP number twenty dash nineteen, forty-four as conditioned. I can help, I can answer any questions that you have, and also the applicant is also here as well.
Thank you, Kathy. Does the commission have any questions of staff? Go ahead, Angie.
For the applicant, I'm not familiar with the services. Are they a nonprofit or is it sole ownership?
It's a sole ownership, so it's, it's not a franchise or anything like that. They, so it's just, they only own one business and they're looking to relocate in San Ana.
Do they have any references as to the services they've provided? I know you mentioned it's enclosed, I'm having a hard time imagining having a center of, I don't know how many animals they're proposing to have in that enclosed space and not having any outside space either, right? They're not supposed to be out.
Can we hold that for the applicant? I think that's going to be an easier question for the applicant to answer than Kathy. I'm giving you, giving you a break, Kathy.
Okay.
All right. So, so are we good?
Yeah. Just wanted to see if you provided any reference.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have, and those have been distributed.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak at this point in time? Please identify yourself and...
Yes. Good evening, I'm Lauren Mayo Harker. I am the owner of K9 Rehabilitation of Orange County, previously located in Newport Beach. And with the sale of the property that we are on in October, we have been out of business. And so we are requesting to relocate into San Ana and basically resume services and treatments for our patients and our clients throughout Orange County. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the practice or the business. I also brought my broker here today and she can answer more knowledgeably questions about the building itself.
Angie? Yours?
So, so the questions I had were references and then the practices that go indoors and how many animals you guys plan to have indoors and now you mentioned Newport, was it the same size that you guys had in Newport or was it smaller or bigger than what you guys were working with?
Okay, we'll start with my references. I am a certified K9 rehabilitation practitioner. I am also a state licensed registered veterinary technician. Both of those are four-year degrees through veterinary programs. They do require conditionally, conditional education, so continuing education and regular licensing. I am modified and policed, I guess, by the Veterinary Medical Board in California. I also have obligations to the university that I graduated my rehabilitation program through, which was the University of Tennessee's program. So I meet those criteria throughout my medical practice. I'm sorry, Angie, I forgot your other question.
Yeah, so that was part of... Do you have any other references? Because, I mean, if you look at a nonprofit, it's easier to get those references than a sole proprietorship. I'm just interested because it does, you mentioned brings animals all over Orange County.
So you're looking for references regarding my clientele or like who, who do I treat?
Yeah.
Well, I, I see patients throughout Orange County. I'm one of two facilities within Orange County that have been operating, so at the moment I'm not operating, so there's just one right now, but I, I pull from as far as, I actually see a few clients from as far as Riverside, and I've got several in the immediate area, several clients that live in San Ana, Costa Mesa, Tustin area, but they do come from all over to see me and they'll continue to do so.
How many animals do you plan to have at that location?
So imagine with physical therapy, just like human physical therapy, you really only want to work on one or two patients at a time. It's not a classroom setting, so our facility will see one to three at a time depending on their treatments. For example, if one of the doctors is performing acupuncture, then I can be working on a different dog, right? So there's, but it's very small amount. And we'll see maximum probably twenty a day, that would be huge, that would be a good goal.
Okay, okay, that makes me happy. And then I think that's just it, I mean, just answering that question.
Good, okay.
I have a really quick question and I guess it's humorous, but I am curious, I don't see a lot of landscaping outside, so where would the animals relieve themselves?
Yes, that's actually a great question. Actually, when we were looking for a facility, that was one of our very important criteria is a, is a potty spot. And so the two things that we're looking for is, is a place that we could put in landscaping that is, you know, dog friendly and responsible. So actually, if you, if we could go back to that picture in the front, I know there's a bunch of cars in the front, but Kathy, can you help pull that up? We actually did put in some dog friendly sod, there we go, ah, there's a big SUV in the middle. But behind that SUV is pine needles and, and bark and so, and a couple of pieces of gravel everywhere, but that has been laid with sod and we've also installed a potty waste station right in front, so it's very convenient so that there's responsible pet ownership. That, that said, being that we've been operating previously and we've been doing this for a little while, we also know that it's, it behooves the staff to do that as well, so we, we are very much on top of it. It's a reflection on us if we have a stinky, smelly facility, and so we're very motivated to make sure that that is not, yeah, it's not a good thing.
Is that facing the main street?
That, what you're looking at, so whoever took this picture is basically standing on Kilson. So Dyson would, or sorry, Dyer would be, you know, basically north, I think, that's north, and then that would be to your right, if that makes sense?
Okay. I'm just thinking, is there a shrub that kind of hides so people aren't coming by while the dogs are like doing their business?
Okay, so...
Like a little fence, I don't know.
Sure, so right now there isn't a barrier. The, the blockade, there's like, you can kind of see in the front of that SUV, there's a little bit of a walkway, so that goes right to the front door, but that whole area, that whole yard is grassed in. As far as the treatments go, because the dogs, they're not staying for very long, they get their treatment and they go. Many times the owners, and we've always asked our owners, please potty your dog before you bring them inside, and then once they've had their treatment for an hour and a half, hour to an hour and a half, then they leave. And so it's really not like they're hanging out for so long and, and honestly, it's, it's a quick turnaround-y thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question.
Norma?
The staff report indicates that the CUPs for kennels for temporary care and lodging of dogs and other domesticated household animals, based on what you just said, you don't intend to lodge animals, so is that, that needs to be corrected?
I can help answer that question. So in the M1 zone, it allows for kennels, so the, it's not specifically listed as a rehab, rehab facility, so the closely related use would be kennels, and that's basically a temporary lodging of dogs. So the planning manager made that summer use determination. That's closely related to kennels.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I do want to clarify though, there is no overnight, the dogs don't stay. There's actually a limit to how much, how long they can stay, and so there's, there's not, you know, food and bedding and they, there's actually also no barking. When the dogs are there for treatment, they're one-on-one with a human, they're not, you know, left in a, there's actually no cages, so they stay one-on-one and they work with their physical therapist while they're doing their activities, they're stretching and they're massage and they're strengthening activities, and then they go home, their mom and dad come and pick them up. So there's really not a kennel, but that's really the, the language that we're reaching closest to.
Ty?
This is for Kathy or Min, whoever. So just to clarify that comment before, because your conditions are limited to these hours of operation, nine to three, Monday, Wednesday, Thursdays, and then Tuesday, Fridays, nine to five, even if we approve the CUP, subject to the conditions, meaning even if the CUP is closely related to the kennel and the boarding, it would not result in any boarding of dogs?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Just to kind of help, you know, we do oftentimes look at different uses and able to interpret. An animal hospital or a medical office would not have been permissible in this zone, but since it's dealing with animals and we're able to closely associate with the kennel, this was used to help facilitate the application, but also give us the ability to place conditions so that the impact can be addressed in case if there's any for this use.
I would just request this, you know, to, to Ty's point, that, you know, it's slippery slopes, so we're, we're going to say it's restricted to this time, no, no actual lodging will occur if, you know, later point in time, there's a request that they have to come back. Because once you say, you know, we're, we're issuing the CUP under this code that allows for it, then I think she can come back and do that. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
The applicant can.
Yeah.
If they want to in the future modify the application, they would have to go back before the planning commission for public review. So regardless of whether or not we restrict it or we don't, they still have the ability to modify the application in the future. In this case, what you're proving is a kennel use that is associated with this, this applicant and also limiting the hours of operation. So if they want to change it so that they can keep dogs overnight or animals overnight, they would have to come back and do a public hearing process like they do now. That is a permitted use pursuant to the conditional use permit. So what you're proving today is a limitation on the, the license.
Understood, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, how are you classified in Newport Beach?
As a physical therapy place in Newport Beach. My business license said canine physical therapy.
Or potentially an animal hospital.
And so my question is, why isn't it an animal hospital versus a kennel? Because I think kennel is, 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 is too broad, I mean...
So office-type use are not permissible in the M1 zone. So medical offices, because basically it's, could be a medical office or animal hospital. So we don't have those used as a speci...
I mean, so far, it could be a medical office, it could be a hospital, medical, you know...
Correct. And it could be a kennel.
Well, I think if I'm, if I'm ranking the three...
Correct.
The lowest one on the list is kennel. And I think what you're hearing from the commissioners is that kennel is too broad, too simple, and not necessarily... too simple, and not necessarily what we would expect this to be because, I mean, I think you've done a great job of defining how this is, how the facility is going to be used and what the outcomes and expectations are. And I just don't see this classification as a kennel. I mean, I think it should be something closer to what we believe it to be and that would be an animal hospital or...
What about animal clinic?
Animal clinic.
The other distinction, animal hospitals and clinics require doctors on premises and she uses therapists, which is a different interpretation, which is also the same logic we apply for our medical use as well. If you have a doctor involved, you're a medical office. If you have a non-doctor, then you're considered a service use. So this is basically a service use. Again, we have a code that's 35 years old, that's outdated, and we're trying to work with our clients coming in with these different uses that our code didn't envision, you know, a long time ago. So this is a use that needed a big floor space, like an industrial space. It's all being connected indoors, not impacting the community. We've made a similar call in the past with some other doggy daycare types of uses. We consider them to be kennel-type uses and put them under the same kind of envelope, so...
Well, I mean, now we're reverting back to the fact that, you know, we don't have a general plan that's up to date.
Working on that, too, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, which is a year from now, so to speak, or half a year.
Or less, or less.
Norma, do you have any?
I do, I mean, I feel like it, subject to your comment now that, you know, that's how you classify day, animal daycares, I feel like a kennel has a negative connotation and I don't think we want to open the door to saying kennels and, and I think it's completely the opposite of what you're actually doing, which is providing a great service.
Thank you.
And I welcome that in our city, I'm glad that you're looking at us and, you know, but I would, I would love to see it classified as something else if that's even, if that's feasible. I hate to ask that, but I do feel like I don't, I don't like the idea of kennel and the, you know, lodging of dogs. But that's just my thought there.
Any else have a comment?
I would just like to say, I really like your project. It sounds really great. I think that I understand where you're coming from regarding having to use designation for something that didn't exist whenever we had the general plan. I think that despite our concerns regarding the term kennel, I think, you know, the applicant can't control that and that's something that we can deal with regarding, in the general plan because something like this might expand, we might have more of these services, so just to make sure that we put that going forward so that we don't penalize this applicant with a great project and service for the city.
Thank you.
Great, I think we're set. I have one more card, Tara Haddad.
Hello, my name is Tara Haddad. Sorry for the casual appearance tonight.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
I actually am Lauren's previous landlord, so you may actually have some questions for me, but I'd just like to say, I operated a doggy daycare boarding facility in Newport Beach that specialized in medically fragile pets. So we were much smaller than your average kennel, if, you know, you want to use that word, but we did provide overnight boarding for dogs that had cancer, seizure disorders, were on a lot of medication or had mobility issues. And Lauren's business complemented mine wonderfully for the years that we were together, which was about four. And I was able to sell my business, or actually the property. And so I completely support Lauren. Her, what she does provide is really, really needed in Orange County. And when you're, I don't know a lot about the politics and the semantics and I think it's, you guys are struggling a little bit with some of that, it seems like. What I think for her use, it's a little more like a groomer. So it's not really like more, it's not as much like the medical side of it, but like the groomer where the dog comes and has a little touch-up, stuff done to them and then they, they go, you know, by people who are licensed to do what they're doing. But I can say that for the time she was with me, she, our place was impeccably clean. We really strive for that with a lot of the stuff we had going on and I know that she'll do a wonderful job.
Thank you, Ty.
And I'm happy to answer questions if you have any for me.
That's okay, we can't ask you questions.
I'm sorry?
I said, we can't ask you questions, okay?
Oh, you can't ask questions.
It's public speaking.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you. All right. With that, the public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anybody like to make a motion at this point in time?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
For item number 201944.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Ken, second, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero, one absence. Thank you. Okay, this is the time and place to consider item number four, conditional use permit number 2019-45 and variance number 2019-06 for the project located at 1570 East Seventeenth Street. Decisions on this matter are final unless appealed, appealed within 10 days by any interested individual group. If you wish to address the planning commission, please do so by filling out a card. Do any of the commissioners have anything to disclose at this point in time? No? All right. Jerry, you're back.
I am.
All right, come on.
All right, this next item's on conditional use permit number 2019-45 and variance number 2019-06 on behalf of Mike Florrie with Easter Seals of Southern California for the property located at 1570 East Seventeenth Street. The applicant is requesting two entitlements, the first one being a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an adult daycare facility and the second is a variance to allow a reduction in off-street parking. This is an image of the existing elevations off of Seventeenth Street. The applicant's proposing to occupy roughly about a 10,215 square foot building that was constructed in the 1962 era and has been primarily used as medical and other office uses throughout the years. The subject site highlighted in red is located at the southwest corner of Seventeenth Street and Concord Street. As previously mentioned, the project itself is kind of already developed, occupying an existing commercial building. And then to the north, you do have some medical and office uses. You also have some office and medical uses to the east and then you do have an apartment complex to the south and to the west, so we do have a religious facility. This is the proposed site plant. The building is being highlighted by the shaded blue area. It does have 36 surface parking stalls and you are going to have access off of Concord Street, which is right in, right out, and then a one-way exit off to Seventeenth Street. In addition to the change of use, the applicant is conducting some minor interior as well as exterior improvements, refreshing the landscaping, parking lot improvements, restriping to accommodate up to 36 parking spaces. The facility will operate seven days out of the week from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM and the adult daycare services will be provided from 8:30 AM to 3:00 PM. And a total of 25 employees are proposed at this particular location with a potential up to 40 individuals that they will be serving. This is the proposed floor plan, so again, not many changes happening there, kind of highlighted the program activity area for you, which is highlighted in blue. And then the remainder of the floor space is primarily just offices with some conference room as well as the break room area for the employees. The conditional use permit is consistent with our Santa Ana standards. In addition to our licensing as well as our entitlements, the applicant is required to obtain a license from the California Department of Social Services, which they also have their own process and additional requirements that the applicant can elaborate a little bit further. The targeted population for this particular facility is for individuals with developmental, physical or cognitive or multiple disabilities. And some of the services that they're going to be including include nursing services, physical occupational therapy, speech therapy, mental health services, physical therapy, personal care and nutritional counseling. This particular facility is not going to have any overnight states and it's also meant to provide 24-hour care. In addition to the CUP, the applicant is requesting a variance. Per our code, we do require a minimum of one parking space per every 200 square feet of assembly or activity area, which equates to 28 parking spaces. In addition to that, we do require one space per every teacher as well as supervisor and with the number of employees that they're proposing is 25, so a total of 53 parking spaces are required. So as indicated, they are restriping the site and can only accommodate up to 36 parking spaces. Because of that, the applicant was told to hire a consultant to prepare a parking demand analysis. The applicant did hire our key engineering to prepare the parking demand analysis, which was included in the staff report as an exhibit. Our key engineering did a study of a similar facility that's also run by Easter Seals in the city of Gardena. That particular facility had only 19 employees, but also does provide services for up to 40 individuals. Based on the study, a parking ratio demand of .36 parking spaces per individuals was calculated at that facility. And with, when you add that to the current or the proposed facility, as mentioned, that facility only had 19 employees, this one has 25, there's, there's a gap between of six employees. So based on that 0.3 ratio that was determined at the other facility, 14 parking spaces was concluded to be required to service the 40 individuals plus the six additional that was not accounted for. So a total of 20 parking spaces, what's being called out by the parking demand analysis to be sufficient to provide services for this facility. And as mentioned, the applicant is proposing 36 parking spaces, so that kind of equates to a surplus of 16 additional parking spaces. With that, after reviewing the analysis provided by our key engineering, the city staff is recommending that the planning commission approve conditional use permit number 2019-45 as conditioned, as well as variance number 2019-06 as conditioned. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jerry. Before we get started, I just want to say, I have a personal activity I have to go to and so I'm going to be turning the meeting over to Vice Chair Cynthia Contreras-Lee at this point in time. Bless you, girl. All right. Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions, the staff, at this time? No?
I do, I have a question.
Ken?
I'm a little concerned about the parking spaces required for the project. Did you say two or square foot, square foot par, per parking, one parking, maybe two or so? So we required 28 parking spaces. An employee had 20, we needed 25 spaces, so a total of 53 and the facility only provided 36 spaces and we're short 17 spaces. Let me ask you, how the patient or client, if we try and put two and four, the facility provide any type of transportation and pick up and return and so for the patient daily? So for that reason why, they came up with the parking analysis with the extra spaces?
That's correct. So as indicated, they did do an analysis based on an existing facility in the city of Gardena that had approximately the same amount of individuals that they serviced and that facility concluded that they only needed .36 parking spaces per individual. The applicants here as well, they could kind of talk more in terms of the services that they provide, but facilities like that, it's typical that they provide transportation services to their participants. In addition to that, the location is centralized in the city and it does have access to other modes of transportation.
So just to follow up on that, Commissioner Nguyen, the services that they provide are to developmentally disabled adults, so the clients are, transportation provided by Easter Seals to the site or public transportation, their patients do not have driver licenses issued, so parking for clients would be minimal.
That's what I thought because most of the adult daycare facility that either a family member dropping off the parent or whatever, the elder to this facility and pick them up, but at the end of the day, or the facility must provide some sort of transportation services, otherwise the, most of the client would not be able to, you know, attend at the facility on a daily basis. Most of, you know, we have like four or five adult daycare facility in Orange County. One, one used to be on Santa Ana or region west and on First Street and now closed. And then they very do very much the same thing.
Yes, and their operation is a little bit unique in the sense that their clientele don't generally stay on-site all day. They go out and actually into the community and do work. So they can explain a little bit more, but I think, you know, you'll find that it's a little bit different operationally, but at the end of the final analysis basically is that their clients do not require spaces for parking because they don't drive, so...
Yeah, that's, I just want to clarify the shortage of parking space required for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, I'm sorry. Maybe that's not a fair question for you, but just to address that point, the report at page 47 says that the majority of the staff members are expected to use the city's public transportation and therefore those 25 spaces will not be expected to be used for staff. And so again, maybe this is the question for you, but based on that comment, leads me to believe that maybe the conclusion was that the clients would be using the spaces but not the employees and so I just maybe get some clarification on that.
It is, their clients do not use the parking spaces. The parking spaces will primarily be for staff and anyone potentially visiting the site. So let me go to the page you're referencing. Can you repeat the page number?
Oh, 47, four, dash, 47. Yes. Paragraph three.
So what it says is majority employees are expected to use city public transportation. It is understood that the majority of participants and staff member would not park on-site. They may have a policy for that, that would help improve the demand on-site, but I know for a fact that their clients do not have demand on-site.
Any other questions for staff? No? Okay, at this time, have we received any written communication?
We have not.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. I don't think we received any requests, right? Okay. Jerry? The applicant's going to come up now.
Good job. Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the committee. Thank you for taking on this topic. I'm with Easter Seals Southern California. I am the facilities manager for Easter Seals. If you're not familiar with us, we're one of the largest nonprofit organizations serving people with disabilities in the country and especially in Southern California. The mission of Easter Seals is to maximize the independence of people with disabilities. So as you've heard, we're working with people with developmental disabilities and we want to emphasize the independence of those individuals. So we are the anti thesis of state housing and programming for people with disabilities. We are about getting people into the community to work, to shop, to volunteer, to learn, to play. That's what we're about. So when I hear the word adult daycare center, it's almost a misnomer because this is more of a hub. We have 22 of these hubs in Southern California where folks will come using public transportation to the center in the morning and then they go out in the community to do the things that I just said, to volunteer. They volunteer at the Santa Ana Library, at the senior center, they get out in the community. And the people that take them out into the community are people that work in the city of Santa Ana. So to the... So to the question about the parking, many of the folks live and work right in the community, so there's not a requirement, but the simple fact of the matter is, many times, they can arrive using public transportation as well, and at our other facilities, that's exactly how it works. We purchased this property ten years ago from the American Lung Association, who've been providing nonprofit services there for, I think it was fifteen to twenty years. We use this building as our corporate headquarters. We've been doing so many services in the community that we needed larger space for the administrative component, and so we thought we would transition this space to another one of our community-based adult daycare services. Took us a little longer than we had anticipated, and it kind of breaks my heart, what has happened to the property. I actually led the renovation of the building the first time through, and because it sat there for a little while, and because we've worked through with the city, trying to get the plans exactly right, any vacant building, as you know, becomes a target for homelessness, vagrants, and our building has not been immune from that. So we are very eager to get the approval of the commission so we can get started and start providing community services. As you heard, we're going to employ at least twenty-six people that will work directly at this location. The majority of them will come from the city of Santa Ana, and we're going to serve people throughout Orange County, but we actually serve people who live in Santa Ana who have to actually go to other locations, Brea and Anaheim, to receive our services. So we're very excited about this opportunity. I think it's going to make a difference for the city of Santa Ana, for the people that will work there, who will be served there. And have I left anything out? Okay, well, we appreciate all your efforts for this. We will be a good steward of the community, and this property's going to even be better than it was when we occupied it administratively. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Ken?
You mentioned on the classified under applications indicators adult daycare, and in your presentation, you say they got this individual able to go out and helping, working, volunteers, and so on.
Yes.
Are they the disability, individual with disability?
Yes.
And why they aren't tied to, admitted to a so-called adult daycare facility that you mentioned? Like, that little, if they go to adult daycare and able to go out and volunteer, help other
So all the program participants at this location and at the other adult daycare centers that we have are supported by the regional center system, so that funds the programming. And our thought process is that the more people can get out in the community and participate, the more independent they will become. So it's not about having them sit around all day and watching TV, it's about integrating them as much as possible and giving them opportunities for independence. And it's a far cry from the thinking that was present twenty, thirty years ago, where if you go over to Costa Mesa, to the Fairview Regional Center, people sat there all day long staring at a television set. That's not what happens in this building. This is a place where there will be activities there. There'll be a computer lab, there'll be opportunities to socialize and interact, but they'll arrive in the morning. They go out for their activities in the day, whether it's volunteering at the library or wherever they're going, might come back for lunch, and then have an activity in the afternoon. And so that's what this is. If you think of a facility, that's not what this is. That's just meeting what the code says it is, but that's not the reality of the program when you see it. And I welcome you all to come out and see it once we get open.
So just to provide a further clarification, I do recognize the use here may not meet the traditional ideas of what we have approved in the past as adult daycare, where senior or other developmentally physically disabled type situation will go to a center and be there physically every day. We did discuss this in extent with the staff, because of how we define adult daycare and how the state license requirement for them, even though their use is a little bit different, still falls into our category of adult daycare, and that's how we are licensing it. So it's a state issue in terms of what kind of license they require them to have and how they expect the local jurisdiction to also issue a license, because of their funding mechanism and how they operate, it falls into our definition of an adult daycare.
That's because my understanding, the normal understanding with the adult daycare or the disability, that they need to, you know, enter the facility on a daily basis. That was, I would like to have a better understanding of the land use on the particular operation facility. That was with the client, who was the client, and why they needed those types of facility.
So this seems like the dog therapy permit, that this is, we're bringing a lot of new innovative kind of services to the city of Santa Ana, and whether it's state law or local general plan, you know, our terms that we're using are just not able, are not meeting these new services that we're bringing in. Is that correct?
I would agree with you one hundred percent.
Okay, so what you're saying is that with your innovative approach, you are helping individuals who are developmentally disabled or otherwise handicapped, to give them opportunities to use their skills and go out into the community, do, you know, neighborhood services, volunteer, and are able to become more independent adults.
Couldn't have said it better.
Okay, so the term adult daycare in this case, then, is just a term that the state has kept, because it has not yet kept up with these new innovative approaches to taking care of our disabled adult population.
Correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I understood, and that what we're approving here is this new approach, but that the terminology is just outdated. Thank you.
And also, when I had read what you guys were going to be providing, it's not at all what we're hearing today. So I think that maybe some rewriting to really understand that when, that it's signed at the end, that it actually states what happens, because my other question is, if the volunteers are coming and then they take the clients out, what are they, do you have vans that they use? How is it that they're taking them out if they're using public transportation to get there?
They use public transportation to go wherever they're volunteering. Sometimes they'll, they'll walk, and sometimes they'll take public transportation. So you've probably seen this program and you didn't even realize it. So you've probably been out and about and seen a group of three, maybe four people that have someone that's helping them through their daily activities. That's an Easter Seals-type program. Whether it's at a fast food restaurant, or at the library, or you see them volunteering at a food bank, that's basically what it looks like.
And we're asking these questions because that was not addressed here. So if we had read what your program actually consisted of, we might be asking different questions, but that's why we're not trying to put you on the spot or anything, it's just we're trying to understand what your actual program provides, and we're just learning about it now. Is there any way that, I know we have certain codes and they might be outdated, but until they are changed, is there any way to say, in the spirit of this code, but this is what's the reality, you know, what's actually going to happen, just so that we make reference to the code that we're using in order to approve the project, but then clearly state what it is and not?
I think your, the discussion tonight, both on the kennel and this issue, really does put a spotlight on our job. We should do a better job of describing the uses for an outdated code, so make sure that our staff will be working towards that. For this case, I would be, I would recommend that through the resolution that if you approve tonight, we can actually describe the actual use that's putting the application into it so that it fits into what they're proposing.
And I think in no way we're saying staff's not doing a great job. I think you are. It's just that, things are changing, and, you know, sometimes our laws and codes don't keep up, so I think this is where the clash is happening, and I think it's exciting, it's a good thing.
Yes.
So yeah, I think if we could do that, that...
We can do that. If the resolution to be adopted tonight, we can modify it to describe the use as described.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Oh, are you good?
I have just one. What is the source of your referrals for the participants?
The regional centers.
Regional centers? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. What the distance between facility to nearest public transportation?
How close is this facility?
Yeah, to the public transportation.
We're right on the bus line. There's literally a bus station, a bus stop at, I wish I had the map, but on that cul-de-sac, there's a bus stop right to the right of it.
Less than fifty feet?
Yes.
It's like five feet away.
Yeah.
I guess I do have one more comment. I know exactly where you are, it's on my route to taking my kids to school at St. James' every morning, or picking them up every afternoon, and there is a lot of homeless activity in the area. Given the participants of your program, I wonder if you've considered safety issues? And I'll leave that maybe for further conversation with staff on how that could be addressed.
Can I comment on that? We occupied that building for eight years, and we never had any problems. And I think, like most of the city, where there is activity, there's not a problem with vagrancy and homelessness. It's when you allow a building to sit empty, as long as ours have, that it becomes an attractive spot for them to go. We had people scaling the roof to get into the center courtyard. I mean, the things that happened to that building, it's really, it's a shame, but it's going on everywhere. So I feel very strongly that once we get started, that that issue's going to go away, at least for this pocket of the community. And I can tell you right now, because I get phone calls all the time from the apartment complex behind, that they're thrilled with the prospect of this being approved, because they know what not having a tenant in that building has done to that little corner.
And we're in complete agreement. We work very hard with our community development agency to re-tenant empty buildings, as we put more eyes on the street, as we say, you help to fix the problem of homelessness or trespassing. Obviously, we can't fix the problem, the root problem of homelessness, but at least we can fix some of the symptoms of trespassing, and if you have a vacant building or vacant lot, that just becomes a very attractive place for these types of activities. So we work very closely, again, with the agency, the community development agency, to focus on Seventeenth, focus on First Street, you know, downtown areas, anywhere there's vacancies, we try to work with their agency to help re-tenant.
Norma, you good with your questions? Anyone else?
Well, for me, with that said, and with Jeremy's promise to invite us so we can learn more about your organization, I would like to make a motion to approve the CUP twenty-nineteen forty-five.
Hold on, I still have to...
Oh, you still want?
No, there's still, there's steps I need to do before we get to that point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on the item? Seeing that there is no one, and the applicant has made his final remarks, but the public hearing is now closed, does the commission have any final questions of staff?
None.
Okay. Planning Commission, do you have other items about this that you'd like to discuss before? Okay. Angie?
Yeah, I would like to make the motion to approve the CUP number twenty-nineteen forty-five, VA number twenty-nineteen zero-six.
Do we need to add that you're going to be amending it?
Yeah, we'll note that in the resolution.
But do we need to add that to the motion?
Yes.
The motion with resolution to describe the actual use of this facility?
Is there a second?
Second?
No. Norma, second? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes five to five. The unanimous vote at this time, well, item number five has been postponed. There are no other applicants addressing the commission tonight. We are done. Any final comments, commissioners?
I just want to say happy Lunar New Year, and then also welcome to our new commissioner, Ty Phan. I believe this is your first meeting.
I've never been on this side before, so this is very exciting.
You're passing vents?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Norma? You're good. Ty, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Angie?
Well, welcome to you ladies.
And welcome to our new planner. It's been a pleasure, and happy new year to everybody.
Ken?
Welcome Kathy, and also a few Ty Phans for the blank commission. Also, I'm enjoying, and for the compliment, the new monitor we just have in this room now, very clearly and very bright. Very useful, thank you so much.
Oh, this one?
This one.
So much better, right?
Yeah, so much better.
It's not hidden. Okay. All being that, no other comments? Then our next meeting is February tenth, and meeting is adjourned.
They change out, because before, I think they had a screen down here.